I'd like to call this Village Board Meeting of February 1st, 2018, to order. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Excused.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojack?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, once again, would you like to start us off?
I will be the leadoff batter, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Join us this Saturday, February 3rd, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon for a coffee with the Mayor and Village Board. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. The Police Department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during a snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more, and there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking regulations, please contact Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are you looking to market your business in Glendale Heights? Consider joining the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce. The Glendale Heights Chamber meets once a month, once meets, sorry, meets only for a monthly luncheon on the first Wednesday of each month from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. Network with other businesses, learn the difference, learn about different events in the community, and market, and grow your organization. For more information on joining the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, please email Stop by Glendale Lakes Golf Club Friday, February 16th, and Friday, March 30th, for a meal you'll never forget. The Glendale Lakes Golf Club will be featuring their Fish Fry for two nights only, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Try some great food at great prices. Enjoy our All You Can Eat Fish Fry Soup and Salad Bar, or appetizers and other items off our new menu. Call (630) 260-0095 to make a reservation today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike.
Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure that they are not in need of assistance in extreme weather conditions. Glendale Heights has a warming shelter in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, call the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. As a reminder, in any emergency, you should always call 911 for immediate assistance. During periods of extreme weather, the Police Department will activate its senior call list to check on senior citizens. Seniors or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens, or contacting the Police Department's Community Outreach Specialist at (630) 909-5459, or the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Maritato?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snowblow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This will ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the Police Department non-emergency number at Bring the show, bring the show to the small stage at the first-ever community talent show. Whether you twirl, cheer, dance, sing, act, or play an instrument, we welcome participants of all ages. Auditions are Monday, March 5th, at 6:00 p.m. The final performance is Thursday, March 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. Come cheer on some of the best talent in the community. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojack?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
On Thursdays through April 12th, the Center for Senior Citizens is partnering with AARP to host the AARP Tax Aid Program. This is a free service, can answer most of your tax questions, and help you file your 2017 taxes. The AARP Tax Aid is the nation's largest volunteer-run tax assistance and preparation service. Appointments will be held on Thursday between 9:00 a.m. and noon. Please call (630) 260-6050 to schedule an appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor Jackson.
You're welcome.
Register today for the Chip In Casino Trip. Now, this three-day trip, which includes two nights, leaves the Center for Senior Citizens on May 17th and returns on May 19th. The location is Escanaba, Michigan. This resort features two Towers of Rooms with indoor pool, sauna, and a casino. The price also includes a ticket to see the world-famous Terry Fader Show, winner of two seasons of America's Got Talent. For more information, contact the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have two proclamations. The first one being a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as American Heart Month, and a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as National Salute to Veteran Patients. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamations.
Go.
Okay. Next, Nicole, this must be your turn.
My part. So, thank you, everyone. The idea to collect Valentines started in the village over 20 years ago, and the collections continue to increase each year. Valentines were received from residents, schools, clubs, PTOs, businesses, and organizations, not only in our community at large, but throughout Cook, DuPage, Kane, and Kendall Counties. Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens volunteers, volunteers from ID Commerce and Logistics, and veterans from BFW Post 2377 helped to sort all of the Valentines received. The thousands of Valentines, which you can see in front of us, collected will be mailed to Illinois Veteran Homes and Veteran Hospitals to remind the veterans that they are loved and appreciated. To those who participated, thank you for your generosity in supporting this effort year after year. Please know that wherever your Valentines end up, and that whoever reads it, will know that they are appreciated. So, Mayor and Board, would you please share some of the cards in front of you? Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Phil, your turn, again.
All right. Seeing as people know that I am the bearer of mostly bad jokes, this is "You Are One in a Minion." Thank you for protecting everyone. And no signature, but thank you whoever made this. Mike?
My turn. Very nicely done card. Says "Happy Valentine's Day" on the front, and on the inside it says, "Dear Veteran, thank you for your service and for your protection of our freedom. We are thinking of you and hoping you come home safely. Happy Valentine's Day." With no signature on it.
Your turn.
I have a lovely card here that has a drawing on the front with a soldier on his shirt. It says, "I'm a Fighter," and he's saluting and saying, "Go, America, salute." This is addressed to all veterans, and it's from Jaden at Hall School. And inside it states, "Thank you, veterans, for your service. Thank you for serving our country. We thank you for all your hard work. Happy Valentine's Day."
I'll go ahead and read mine. My card says, "Happy Valentine's Day," and then it says, "Hero." A hero is an ordinary person facing extraordinary circumstances and acting with courage, honor, and self-sacrifice. Thank you. Now, your turn.
Mine says "Thank you" on the front. Dear Veteran, you have done a lot for this country and should be acknowledged for it. This is why I am writing this card for you. Thank you for protecting us and making sacrifices for us. I hope you are doing good and continue to be acknowledged. Sincerely, Aaron.
Thank you, Marie. Your turn.
It says, "Happy Valentine's Day" on the front with a smiley face, American flag in the middle. This is from Nino. Thank you for your service and your sacrifice for this country. Most of all, thank you for my freedom.
This one says, "Thanks for your service. Dear Soldier, I'm in Illinois, and I'm in fifth grade. Thank you for protecting our nation and helping us keep freedom through the U.S. Sincerely, Gabe." With a nice big star.
Mine has a beautiful American flag, all right? And what it says is, "Dear Veterans, we all love what you and every other active veteran do out there. It's so amazing that you risk your life for us every day. The things that you do is awesome, and we respect you day after day after day. With the Pledge of Allegiance, I can't thank you enough. Love, Calvin."
Thank you, Mary. Thank you so much, Nicole, and thank you to everyone that every year sends Valentines for these veterans. It's very important and very much appreciated. We now go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being known, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Schmidt?
I move the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. New business, before we start, we need to remove new business items number three, four, and five.
Do you want a motion on that?
And if you've done that, then we go to new business. I don't have to do a motion. Go to new business, number one, and that is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. Trustee Schroder? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on item two, which is "An Ordinance to amend." Title IV, Chapter III of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. It's for a liquor license for Queenship of Mary. And first reading was waived, so this is ordinance number 2018-11. Trustee Pojack?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-11 is approved. Number six, "An Ordinance Rezoning the Property Commonly Known as 634 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights." This is from the January 18th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and that is first reading. Number seven is "An Ordinance Granting a..."
Do you want to wave? You got to wave it from the top.
Actually, Mayor, the, we do not want to waive, we do not want to waive first reading. This should be first reading, so...
That's what I said.
Yeah, that's what, the agenda was a little bit different.
Agenda says waive first reading.
Oh, sorry.
No, Mayor was correct.
Same here as number seven.
Yours didn't get fixed. Number seven, "An Ordinance Granting a Conditional Use to Permit an Integrated Shopping Center Located at 634 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois." That is also from the January 18th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and this is first reading. And that ends new business, so we now go back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being known, a motion to recess, the board meeting to go into Committee of the Whole would be in order. Trustee Schmidt?
I move we recess the board meeting to go into a Committee of the Whole meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Chester.
Board meeting is recessed till after the Committee of the Whole, and then we will be adjourning to executive session to address collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Illinois of compiled statutes 5 ILCS 120/2C2. So this meeting is recessed, and Committee of the Whole goes to trustee Schroder.
I would like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Thursday, February 1st, 2018, to order. Will the Clerk please note to his present?
Noted.
All right. Are there any additions or deletions?
None.
All right. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment?
Before public comment begins, I'd just like to advise everybody that the village has a five-minute limitation on remarks during public comment sessions. Mr. Cope, if you're going to speak now, that will be your comments with regard to the agenda item, then. Thank you. This is your opportunity, yes, sir?
Please state your name and address.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ronald Cope, C-O-P-E. I'm an attorney at 70 West Madison Street in Chicago. I would first like to point out that I'm here to talk about the agenda item that you have in regard to the application by the Graeber Concrete Company. But before I even get into that, I'd like to say that I am also a trustee in another village, and I want to know how, tell you how beautiful this is, and how much I appreciate it, seeing the hearts and the goodwill and the sentiment that's involved. It's something that I think should be emulated in many other communities, and I'm sorry to say that we don't do it, but I'm going to take back a message to our village because I think it's a beautiful thing to do. So let me, I know that takes into my five minutes, but I'll try and focus...
Thank you.
Thank you.
More clearly on, I had a letter passed out to you which summarizes some of our thoughts regarding the application that is before you for your discussion. I'd like to just call your attention to this document. I'm not going to take the time to read all of it, but just a short summary, because I think it'll give you a flavor of what we're concerned about. First, we're in favor of the rezoning that has been recommended to you by the Plan Commission, so there's no objection to that at all. And second, we're also in favor of the conditional use which has been recommended to you, so there's no objection to that at all. What we have objection to are some of the conditions that were tagged on to the rezoning and to the conditional use, which basically takes a huge segment of this property, almost half the property, would be taken away from the property owners. So let me just call your attention to the last paragraph on the first page. Many of the additional conditions recommended by the village planning department and incorporated into the recommendation from the Plan Commission stem from the fact that a residential development was permitted to be built adjacent to this industrial property. Now, this industrial property has been there for decades. It's Graeber Concrete Manufacturing, and it was there in the 1960s. It was M1 in the county. It's an active industrial site. In 1978, a residential developer came to the village, and I can't blame anyone here, and I don't for what took place in 1978, but at that time, the residential developer wanted to rezone the property that was M1, that was adjacent to Mr. Graeber's property to the east, from manufacturing to residential and to build residences. So Mr. Graeber and other property owners appeared before the Plan Commission and before the Village Board and said, "This is a big mistake. Or if you're going to do it, at least create substantial setbacks." He suggested 300 feet, rezone that 300 feet, something else, but in its infinite wisdom, the Plan Commission and Village Board went ahead and rezoned that property to the east, and allowed it to be developed residential. Now, Mr. Graeber's operation was in full bloom during that time, so anyone who bought a residence would know that they were right next to a industrial property. And in fact, if you look at the zoning map, we don't have anything up here, you'll see, and by the way, I didn't start to time myself, so cut me off whenever you feel like it, but you'll see that the industrial property extends all the way out into Carroll Stream. It's a huge industrial complex. Now, that's not our property. Our property is only 248 feet wide. Now, it extends back 1,200, but it's only 6.89 feet, I mean 6.89 acres, and what's being recommended is that almost half, just about half, be not used, that it just be left open, really, I guess for the benefit of the neighbors, but it serves no purpose, because this is an important point. There is a significant plan to buffer the area between Mr. Graeber's property and the residential property to the east. It's very expensive. It's going to extend the entire length of the property. He's putting in trees, he's putting in berms, he's putting in a fence that's going to extend several feet up on top of the berm. So he's doing an improvement there, which is going to cost them a small fortune, but he's doing it to improve the area and for the benefit of that area. It's an important concept. The other important concept that we want to make clear to you is that this property has to be fenced in. Some of the recommendations are to leave it open, to have public parking in front, to have asphalt paving. We can't do any of that. The asphalt will break, it can't stand the weight of the heavy equipment and materials, so putting it there is just a waste of money. And we must have a fence to keep the property... Whoops. Is that for me?
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's the timer, sorry.
Okay, well, then I realize my time is up.
Oh, no, yeah, I was going to give you, you know, a little bit more.
Okay, well...
I didn't realize the gong was going to go off.
Thank you. So we object first to those extended buffers. We object to the condition that we can't keep the property fenced in, because if to allow it to be open would simply allow for theft, for people to drive in and steal material, it just can't be done. There's other things as well that I know that in the five minutes I can't cover it all, but it's in this letter. Those are important conditions. So just to sum up, yes, we're in favor of the rezoning. It makes sense, you can't have this property as AE zoning, and the conditional use makes sense, but the added conditions do not make sense, and I think if you read what we've put here, you'll see that it would really first be a taking, and second, create an unsafe condition for the trucks, for the people, and for the operation of this business. So we ask you to please consider that when you're having your discussion. Please take a look at what I've put into this letter, and I please, once again, thank you for your time. I don't, I realize since I do serve on a village board that it's important to observe those time limits, but I felt that it was important to get this in front of you so that you could at least have that as part of the discussion. So thank you for your time. And we're available to answer any questions during the discussion, assuming that you want to have some questions answered. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay.
Any other public comments?
Does anyone have a, all right. Please state your name and address.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Phil Spiewak, 409 Meadowlark. I just wanted to talk quickly about the hours of operation. I don't know if they're supposed to be following that now. If, I believe they were until 6:00 p.m. tonight. I was at the intersection three minutes, and at 6:34 and at 6:35, trucks pulled in. I think it does need to be fenced. I agree with that, because, but the hours of operation are important to local residents. That's it.
Joanne, do we know what the hours of operation are?
The applicant has advised that the hours are currently 24-hour operation. The Plan Commission had recommended 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So that it is not, 6:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m., to clarify for the applicant, or the resident is not in place now. That's for consideration by the Village Board.
Thank you. Any other comment? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to?
I would like to...
All right, please step up to the podium.
I'm Sandy Marquez, 2152 Brittany Lane. I hope the Board will approve the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. I think they're great conditions, and it would greatly improve the quality of life for us residents. I would hope you would consider these recommendations as if it were your own home. Also, for the new planned development on North Avenue, I believe that the Graeber property should also follow those same conditions for the new North Avenue industrial area that was discussed at the last, last meeting, so I just wanted to bring that up. That's all I have.
Good evening, everyone. Marietta Britt, 2118 Brittany Court in Glendale Heights. I'm a longtime resident of Glendale Heights since 1977, so I've seen the village change, and I've seen us develop, and I've seen us grow. At some point in time, you have to make a decision as to how to make changes within your environment. This one particular area, even though it does connect to something all the way through a facility or a office park throughout Carroll Stream and Glendale Heights, it is against, or right up, but it up against homes. It's down Army Trail Road. It... It's down Army Trail Road, it looks terrible, and think about all the people that are going to be driving with all of these trucks. We want, as Glendale Heights, to look good. We want to present our village in the best possible light. That, right now, does not happen. I purchased my home in 98, and yes, I knew that the Graber property was behind me. However, what was behind me were pipes being stored and I, it, through this whole process, they have kept saying that, no, that's, trucks been going in and out of there. There may have been a truck here and there picking up pipes, but it is not. And I, I don't have a full picture of it, but I have pulled up an older picture with some pipes being stored there in that area. We knew that those pipes were back there when we moved into it, and we were willing to accept that. But we were not living with trucks going in and out of the facility. Went on, right on Army Trail Road, again, the, the, um, fence that's right there at their corner has been destroyed. So as a taxpayer, I don't really like having my money go into fixing all of this stuff that's being damaged by Graber. They've told us that the trucks are empty, so why are we worried about, um, materials being stolen out of there? We live there. This is where our home is. This is where my daughter tries and one of the other children tries to play in their backyard. I was in my backyard recently and a truck was having difficulty straightening up and he hit his brake and I could have sworn he was going to go through the fence. This, this, what they're asking is this 10-feet brake is only 50 feet away from where my daughter sleeps. So we hear the noises, we hear the doors opening, we hear the engines running. Everything that they have said is, is different than what we, as residents, have experienced. So I'm, I'm asking you to consider whether or not you would want this going on in your home, your place where you're supposed to go, and it's your respite, it's your place to disappear and, and, and recruit and get ready for your next day. We don't do that. I run in my house at night because there's diesel fumes just settling at my front door. So even though we know that we can't get them to leave, the conditions that the, the board did put onto the, um, the, the, the unit, I would definitely ask you all to consider that and to keep that, um, those, those conditional, those conditions in place. Because what it does is it allows us to start back using our backyards, because it'll, it'll move the noise away from the back of our houses. The urine containers that are being thrown over the fence right now, it was up against my fence, so I took and pushed it back against their fence. But now, I, do I deal with hu- human urine in my yard and what about diesel engine stuff and contamination? So I'm just asking that you think about whether or not you would like this in your yard and, um, please consider that we live here and this is our homes and we have no place to disappear to. The Graber people, they don't live there. They go, they go elsewhere. We're there, we have to be there. This is where our homes are. It's starting, summer's starting now, so we want to be able to go out and enjoy. I don't want to even invite people over to my home because I'm thoroughly embarrassed. And I will tell you that I want, I want to have pride in my home, pride in my community, and I would really hope, I know a lot of my neighbors weren't able to come, but they're, they're, they're very discouraged. They feel like nothing is going to be done. They feel like, why am I going to participate? Because it's, they're already there, no one has made them leave, no one has made things change, so what is the point? And I, I really implore upon you to make a point for us residents to let us feel like, yes, we're being heard. I'm just asking that you let us enjoy our lives because the Graber family, they live elsewhere. They don't live here. They don't have to put up with the noise and let my daughter enjoy her backyard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, Pam?
Uh, yes. What's your name?
Oh.
Mariana. Marita?
Miss, would you come back?
Yeah, could you come back to the podium? I'd like to ask you a question because I'm very concerned about this. Do you have any pictures or anything about the urine that they're throwing over your fence?
Um, the last time, I did not bring them tonight, but the village does have that. Um, I did, um, gave a pic, a CD with the pictures to the building commission. Um, I was having cable installed in my backyard and so the cable guy had to, I have one of the few fences that, um, sorry, gates, that go from our, my property into this property. And, um, so he went back there and he said, "I can't find it." I said, "Well, let me come back." He said, "Jesus stinks back here." So what do you mean? He said, "It smells like another word that I will, but I will replace with urine." And so when I walked back there, not only is there urine, there's feces back there. So whether or not the coyote or the possums or the skunks that we know and, we have in Glendale Heights are using that 10-feet space, as I call it, the animal run, but there were containers, and there were several empty water bottle containers with urine, and I did give a picture to the village. So that's what's going on. So if you move it back 50 feet, maybe that'll keep their urine away from my house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, wait, before you go back.
Yes, Mayor.
Now, you've been there 20 years, right, Marietta?
Well, no, um, I've been almost 20 years, yeah. I just realized that.
Right. Because you said 1998?
99, 98, yes.
Okay. Um, and they've been there that entire time?
Mm-hmm.
And for 20 years, this wasn't a big issue and now all of a sudden it is? Is that because some things have changed?
Yes. As I mentioned, there were, Graber Pipe used to manufacture pipes that go into the ground.
Yep.
Um, and those pipes were rather large. So when they made them in the building, that they have altered and taken all the stuff off the side, because I did notify the village when that happened. There were pipes, and I guess the pipes may have been 10 feet, 12 feet long, and so they stored those along the fence line between where they were and against my fence. And there was a, a break there because I, I'm a big gardener, abbott gardener, and right on the other side of my fence, I used to have a garden and I would have to go back behind that fence and clean up the weeds. And I did go over there once and I spoke with Mr. Graber. He said, "Well, we'll try to keep the weeds under control," which never happened. So I was back and forth there on a regular basis.
But the pipes?
And there were pipes along the whole fence line.
Okay.
What changed was the traffic of the trucks that come in and out. If there was a truck, it may have come in, loaded up, and left, but one of the pictures I had, there were close to 60, maybe 70 trailers parked back there. That is what changed and that is what caused the residents to get fired up.
And that did not, for 20 years, has it operated as Graber Pipe and Concrete?
That did not happen.
They did not have all that.
That is correct.
So the change is what has caused the issue?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and you're okay with the Plan Commission restrictions?
To be realistic, like I said.
Is it the perfect answer? Right.
But we know that, okay, we have to find some happy medium here.
Correct.
They own their property, but we own ours. And we want to enjoy our property, they want to conduct their business. So we're not going to tell them, "Go away and shut down your business," but we want to be able to live and enjoy our homes.
I understand.
And be able to disappear and remove ourself from the world. But right now, we can't do that with all this going on. We can't even sleep at night.
I understand, and I do want to say that as things were changing and you notified the village and stuff, that we did try to stop the work being done there. Stop order, stop work orders were put on the gates and the fence, and they were torn down by the company, its employees, and totally, they totally disregarded the fact that the village needed to know what was going on, that there were permits required. That's how it all came into the hands of Glendale Heights anyway. We didn't decide, gee, we think we're going to go force annex this group. They went to the county and they were going to make these changes on their property, so there had to be a public hearing. And the village was notified along with you residents.
Yes.
Well, we went to the county, as did the residents, and it's like, nobody's going to protect our residents. Nobody's watching over for our people. So that's how we got the village involved, over the county. We have still asked, I believe at the last Plan Commission meeting, I was told from members that were there, that we'd be able to go in and see what's going on there because it's a big secret.
And they did say that in the meeting.
If nothing's changed, but now all of a sudden there's tons of trucks and everything, then something's changed. I grew up in this area. I grew up in Wheaton. I know exactly in the 60s when Graber had the outfit there, right by Cardinal Industries, which was there for many, many years too. So it's not a new area to me. What bothers me is we've got a community development director that has made four attempts since Plan Commission meeting to go view the property that they totally offered to let it be inspected, and she can't even get a response. They won't even call her back. Nobody has let anybody from the village in there to see what's going on. How, they can expect us to approve something or take off some regulations when they won't even allow us to see what it is? I've got a problem with that.
Yeah.
I'm not going to vote to approve something or take away some restriction when I don't even have the ability to see what I'm voting on. So just please keep in mind, we do care about the residents, and this has been a long, lengthy, expensive endeavor for the village. And that's our residents. Businesses can pass off their expenses, we can't. But we do care enough about our people. And I think the only thing I'd like to ask the owners of the property and operators of the business is, what would you do if that was being done right behind your house? Just asking you. Because I'm just going to say that business has been there for 40 years, but for 40 years, there wasn't an issue. There was not people up here screaming about what's going on on their property. She's been there 20 years. I've been up here over 20 years. She wasn't complaining for 20 years about their property. Things have been done that has changed what's going on there, and the refusal to let the village see what's going on there just puts up red lights everywhere that something isn't right. So please, take it back to your neighbors. We do care about our residents. Things have to go through the process and they need to, and everybody needs to be aware of what's going on. And you can't make everybody happy, and we know that.
And we do too.
That's where compromise is. But for somebody to say, "Nothing's changed there," and all of a sudden we have an uproar after 40 years of an operation that people weren't up here complaining about, something's different.
Yeah, to me, it's all integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this gentleman wants to come back, all right.
Mary, is there anyone else that wants to speak before we let somebody else have a second chance? Thank you.
Is there, yes, step right up, please. Step up to the podium and.
I think you got like a minute and a half left.
So, I've, I've been four houses away for 34 years. We moved in in 83. And at 7:00 AM, the pounding would start when they made the pipes, and they were there first, we understood that, and there was a lot of dust. And I'm not sure when it changed, it changed the last few years. Unfortunately, the man lost his life in the silo and helicopters were over and all that. And then when the trucks started, uh, when they were making pipe, it was five days a week, it was Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM, and I don't remember when they stopped. There were not a lot of trucks. There was a lot of pipe, like she said. But now it's just the hours and, and many, many trucks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Ho-Haw. I live at 405 Meadowlark Road in Bloomingdale and have lived there since, I think, August of 2000. Okay? And I can concur, moving in, concrete plant, knew about it, it was fine, lived with the dust, we knew that it was there from the manufacturing, but it has changed in the last few years. The truck traffic is probably 10 to 20-fold what it used to be, and it is now 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So the concerns that were issued by these objections were considered by the Planning Commission, and they still decided to impose these restrictions. And before we, we consider overriding the Planning Commission's recommendations, I do want to follow up on a couple of issues. One of those was that there are no current business licenses for whatever's being done there. Has that been addressed?
That's being addressed as part of this process. So we would not be able to approve a business license for a new business until the zoning's in place. Uh, so that is, that the applicant had indicated that they will be applying, so that is all part and parcel with this.
Is there a business license for the current business or businesses that are being run there?
No, there's not.
So again, that should be something that would be considered before kind of overriding the Planning Commission. Apparently, there hasn't been inspection of the property, that was another one of my concerns originally. Um, that's been addressed previously. Their property seems to be operated as a truck stop at the current time. Is there any confirmation that there's actual manufacturing occurring at that property or is it just a truck stop?
Can't get in.
So we don't. Okay? Um, and I'm not privy to the objections that they raised to the conditions, but I know that ours was one of them, a security camera that the police could monitor the property was another. Are those issues that they're objecting to?
Yes, they are.
If they're objecting to a security camera that the police are using to monitor the property, then that would be of concern. That would imply that they have something to hide. As far as the paving, I know that other properties that have trucks parking are paved, so I didn't know that that was impossible. And finally, I would like to thank the coyotes for using water bottles when they do their business. Thank you.
Uh, that lady would like to.
I live at 421 Meadowlark Road. I'm the first house on Meadowlark Road. We bought our house in 2012, and when we were looking at houses to buy, we did know that that was a concrete plant. It didn't seem like there was a whole lot going on there, it was very quiet. We did buy our house, but since then, it has changed where it is, it's a truck lot, and there's signs at the front of the property advertising lease space available, call this number. I mean, they are definitely looking for more trucks to go in there, and they want more lease slots for this truck lot. It is no lot, I don't know that it's a concrete plant anymore, but it's definitely a truck lot. And that's the objection of the neighbors around it because of the fumes, the safety. And I also wanted to mention, the guardrail on Army Trail has been destroyed now four times. My husband. My husband heard it the last time and went out and called the police. One of the employees came out and said that they have it on camera. So they were giving, everyone was talking to the police. The police had to come because the guardrail was into this Army Trail. So they had to push the metal back so that it wouldn't be actually in Army Trail, so that traffic could still flow. So later on, about an hour later, the police did call us back to say, "Did you get the license plate of the truck?" Because turns out, they don't have it on camera. So my husband did see the name, the name of the truck on the side, but did not get a license plate. But apparently, they didn't, they don't actually have cameras that they're willing to give to the police. That's it.
Good evening. My name is Sam Barzano. I live at 2114 Brittany Court. I've lived there since 1984. When Graber had the pipes there, no problem. Had a nice garden. Now I can't grow my tomatoes or my peppers. Not happy. Not happy. And to push it back further, where they could park the trucks 50 feet, or whatever that's in the thing, is perfect. Because then, with that berm, we won't have a problem. But there is a sign for leasing, to park the trucks. And then, who knows if they're sleeping there? Because I come in at all different times, and I hear. And I don't like it. Not at all. I can't even enjoy, like Marata said, you can't even enjoy your backyard. And I'm sure that any of those people wouldn't like it in their backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica McGuire. I live at 317 Meadowlark in Bloomingdale. I have submitted a letter throughout this process. I also spoke at the last Planning Commission meeting. I share all the concerns voiced by everybody here. But what I'd like to highlight is the safety issue that's raised by the current use of the Graber property. I've lived in the area, I've lived in my current home for 17 years. I've lived in Bloomingdale since 1992. And I've lived in the area, I lived in Medina my entire life. So I'm very familiar with that property. I'm familiar with how it's always been used, and how now, as a truck parking lot, it's being used very differently than it has been for all those years. My understanding is that Army Trail is a county road. It has always been dangerous when we pull out from Meadowlark onto Army Trail Road. And I don't know how many years ago, but the county decided it was a dangerous enough situation that they added a turn lane, the two turn lanes right at Meadowlark and Army Trail. That made things better for a few years. Now, since we have this truck parking lot, it is more dangerous than it ever was. We have trucks stopping traffic all the time. We have near-miss accidents almost every day. I've called the police station. The response that I've gotten when I've called the police station has been, "Sorry, we can't do anything. Accidents are inevitable, and the only time we can do something is once there's an accident." This is an extremely, extremely dangerous situation, not only for the people who live on Meadowlark, but for anybody driving on Army Trail Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to? All right.
Mr. Cope, you know how this process works. This is public comment, and the time limits. Well, I understand that, but, you know, you were given your five minutes, just like everyone else was. If the committee of the whole would like to allow you some additional time, they can do that. But this is not the hearing for testimony, et cetera, so.
I would let him speak.
Yes, all right. Yes, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
I think it's important to clarify a couple of points. First, when we first applied for the rezoning after the forced application, forced annexation, the Plan Commission, the planning department was taken on a tour of the property. Joanne has been out to the property. She's been shown around the property. The question was, more recently, she had asked to come back on the property. So I want to make that clear, Madam Mayor, that it's not that it's a big secret. Second, this is not a police state. I heard people say that they want to have cameras that the police will monitor. Well, I'm fairly familiar with the police operations. I served as the village attorney in Bloomingdale for 30 years, so I have a fair knowledge of what goes on in this area. And the police are not that anxious to be monitoring cameras. We're perfectly willing, and we have installed the security cameras. And if someone has a particular complaint, I'm sure that we'd be happy to make those tapes available to the police department. But I don't know any other business that's being operated in Glendale Heights that has police monitoring them on a 24-hour basis. That's an absurd request. In regard to the operation on the property, when you're manufacturing concrete pipe and moving it around on the property, there are trucks coming in and out, taking the pipe in and out. It is not a quiet operation. What's happened is that in 2007, development fell apart. Do you think Graber wouldn't like to be operating at full bore? He's hoping that the development will come back to life in Illinois. You know, Illinois is not exactly the booming state that it used to be. So he's perfectly happy with that. And I can't imagine, by the way, that people are deliberately going to this lady's backyard and urinating and throwing bottles of water, or urine, into her backyard. That's probably one of the most absurd things that I've heard. So I'd like to just point out that this is a lawful business that's been there for decades. There's always been trucks coming in and out of there. It's crazy to say that there isn't. And in addition, just one other point. One of the things that's permitted in this area is a distribution center. If you'd like to see a lot of trucks coming in and out, then I assume that anybody operating this property could open up a distribution center. And they could have trucks coming in and out all day long. Now, somewhere in 1978, this village board apparently didn't think that carefully about the neighbors, because they would have done what Mr. Graber asked. They would have put in that 300-foot buffer. That didn't happen. So to make Mr. Graber give up his land to create a needless buffer, and at the same time that he's spending all of this money on putting in berms and foliage and trees, is definitely unfair to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe there's at least one other business in the village that has a condition of the conditional use is required to have cameras monitored by the police station. Is that correct, Joanne?
Yes, that is correct.
And it's my understanding that the buffer is applied to the I Industrial District. It's not just this property that's been singled out. And in fact, the petitioners asked for a variation on that standard, down to 60 feet. So right now, you have non-conforming property, and you've chosen to ask the village to zone that with a planned unit development. So this property's not being singled out. In fact, it's asking for a modification of what the current bulk standard is for those types of property. Is there any other public comment? And not everybody, I know some things were said, that maybe somebody wants to get up. I saw the reaction to the urine comment. But we understand what the issues are here. So if there's anyone else that wants to add anything new that the corporate authorities haven't heard, now is your opportunity.
Yes, Pat?
I got some questions. You were on the property then, Joanne? You did go on the property and look?
Prior to the, when the property was initially annexed, I did go on to the property and meet with the Morenos. It was prior to the zoning request, when we were talking about it. But that was several years ago, yes.
Okay, number two. What company is monitored by the police department in town 24 hours a day?
It's Q Bar and Hawthorne Race, the off-track betting. The police don't monitor it 24. They have the ability to access their cameras.
Okay, but that's two different, that's two different totally operations.
The, okay.
So, I mean, that is out of the question. Our police department is on monitor, a place of business that parks trucks 24 hours a day, unless the residents, in due respect to all the residents in Bloomingdale, if they want to pay our police department to do that, I mean, I'd be more than glad to say, yeah, let's do it.
If I could just clarify the condition, that it can be monitored. So not that it will be monitored 24/7, but it can be monitored.
Okay. What about the fence?
Yeah, just to clarify that, actually, that was one of the, I wanted to clarify. The Plan Commission did not recommend approval of a fence in the front yard. The fence in the side yard and the rear yard, the Plan Commission fully supported. It was the fence, it's the fence that was erected in the front yard.
Okay, why won't, why won't we want a fence in the front yard?
Because of the aesthetics and that the, to keep it set back. So part and parcel with not recommending approval of the truck storage in the front yard to keep the front yard more open and available for public parking.
So that means anybody can run through the whole lot?
No, no. The fence, as we're recommending, that the fence be, even with the front of the building. So the whole, the whole rear of the building, the side, it would all be monitored. There would be a gate. So it's just the front yard that we would recommend against the fence.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
If I could, there was one item that the applicant did raise at the Plan Commission meeting that they had indicated that they would be improving the facade of the building. The Plan Commission did not include that recommendation, or that is a condition that they improve the facade. And we would ask that, since the applicant has indicated that they would do it anyway, that that be added as a condition.
Yes, Pat?
What's the big deal about getting into this building, to take a look at it? Somebody wants to stand up and say something?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
You may not be aware that the village decided to file suit against Mr. Graber. And so there's a lawsuit pending. I sent an email to Joliana, to the planners, that if that's not for the purpose of the lawsuit, we'd be happy to show them around. All she has to do is say that that information is not to gather information regarding the pending lawsuit. And we'll be happy to take them around. I just don't want to have them doing, if you want to call it, disgoverning of the lawsuit in a case that's already pending. We're hoping that this will satisfy all of the issues. But because they filed suit under litigation, that changed the perspective of their taking them voluntarily around.
Can you please go, can you close to the speaker so that we can get it recorded on video?
If they want to, first, let me just say, if you go on the property, and I've been there a couple of times, it's quiet, contrary to what they're saying. You will go on that property and stand there, and you'll kind of wonder to yourself, what is everybody having a fit about? But second of all, to answer your question, it's my fault. It's not their fault. I advised them that as long as there's litigation pending, we don't want people walking around, taking pictures and inspecting for purposes of litigation. But if they say that that's not going to be used in the litigation, we'll be happy to take them around. Happy to show them around. There's nothing to hide there.
Mr. Cope, if I was there tomorrow morning at 9:00 in the morning, would you allow me to walk through the property?
It's up to them, to our clients, but the answer is, as long as it's not used for the litigation purposes, yes. Come and walk around. It's a quiet place. I think you'd be impressed with what it's like over there. It's not what's being portrayed by the people who've come here. Come and see it.
Peter, can you please clarify?
Well, first, I'd like to tell Mr. Cope that the village never did receive an invitation to come.
If I, well, if I could clarify, I sent an email on January 10th, January 16th, January 19th.
And I responded to you.
I did not receive a response. When I emailed you again on the 30th, you did respond and indicate, because there's pending litigation, you needed to talk to your client. That was my, that was on the 30th.
No, I said that if you're willing to not use the information, it's that for purposes of litigation, come. And to the trustee who asked permission, come ahead. You come, and I can't say, but they're willing to have you come. They'll take, they'll walk you around there. I think it's a good idea. You should walk around there. It'll give you a better idea of what you're voting on. I think you'll see that it's not what these people have been portraying to you.
The purpose of visiting the paper, the facility would be to see what businesses are taking place at the facility. But you know as well as I do what the village sees they can't unsee.
I understand that, but they could also agree that it would not be used as part of the litigation. They can just say that. But for the trustee who wants to come there, we're happy to have you as our guest.
Peter, can you please clarify, because the attorney, their attorney spoke that we brought suit against them. Can you please clarify that?
Well, currently, there is a suit pending against the Grabers that we did file for violations of our ordinances in our zoning.
Initially, though, that they put-
Initially, the village was sued because we annexed the property, and the owners didn't want to be part of the village of Glendale Heights. So the village was, had to defend itself and its right to annex that property, which was not only in the circuit court, but what also was in the appellate court that we needed to defend that.
But this is a different issue. The question there was the forced annexation, and whether Bloomingdale had priority because they filed a petition there, or whether Glendale Heights had priority. That was what that case was about. I was not involved in it. I had nothing to do with it. But that's what that issue was. But now, we've got a different issue going on. And as I said before, come and take a look. I think that you'll be impressed.
How can I get in there tomorrow morning at 9:00? Is there a gate there? Will you need a password or something?
You just come there, and they'll be waiting for you.
I'll be there at 9:00.
Okay, be good to see you. Thank you.
All right. The Plan Commission has a recommendation to approve an application to rezone the property from the AE Agriculture and Estate District to One Light Industrial District for the property located at 59 West Army Trail Road, west of Bloomingdale Road and east of Schmally Road. We've already covered this, so shall we move it to the board?
Bill.
Bill.
I move that we move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Also, the Plan Commission has a recommendation to approve an application to obtain a conditional use for the planned unit development and allow outdoor storage of construction material and equipment and outdoor truck and trailer parking, including certain deviations from the village's zoning ordinance for the property located at 59 West Army Trail, west of Bloomingdale Road and east of Schmally. Mayor?
I would like to move it to the board with a recommendation to concur with all the recommendations from the Plan Commission. And also, I know, I as one person that sits up here and votes, will not ever vote to approve a business that will not allow the village to know what the heck is going on there. You want a planned unit development, refused to let us in. When things were being done and work orders, stop work orders were put up, they were torn down, tossed away, and everything continued. For 40 years, that piece of property has been there. Neighbors have been around. Nothing happened. Something has changed on their property in the past two or three years. To say it's operating the same way it did for 40 years? No. No. And the more you refuse to let the village know what's going on in their property, the harder it is for anybody sitting up here to make a decision on something that we can't find out anymore about. So I didn't mean to add on to the-
There's a motion- There's a motion. We need a second.
The motion to move it to the board with...
We need a second.
...recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Pat has something to say. Go on, Pat.
We just annexed that property how long ago?
2012.
2012.
Correct.
So, we don't know what went on with that property for the last 30 years because we didn't own it.
We still don't know what went on.
We were familiar what was occurring at the time that it was annexed.
Pat, you lived here. You know what was going on there.
There was no complaints coming to the Village of Glendale Heights because we didn't own the property. It belonged to DuPage County.
The village was receiving complaints before the annexation because individuals thought it was within the village.
Well, I'm just saying.
Chester?
Yeah, there's been issues. Oh, about five, six years ago, Ms. Beretta Britt and myself and about 30 other residents, remember going to the county board? And we fought for annexation to the, to the village. And it was all county property. And this has been going on at least minimum five, six, maybe seven years. And we've been going back and forth, and it's costing us a lot, a lot of money. Taxpayers' money.
Thank you.
And the only other issue I have is this guard rail. This, like the gentleman said four times already, I've seen it. It's crushed right now again. Who pays for that? The county? Anybody has an answer? Who pays for the guard rail? Can Graber put up a camera specifically for that corner so we can get license plates, get after these truckers?
You're assuming that the truck drivers are the ones that are banging into it.
We can't prove it without a camera. I asked, can Graber put a camera up there? Supposedly, there was a camera. They couldn't get a plate number. That's all I have. They have cameras at Jewel focusing on the, on the parking lot. They can get license plate numbers. So can you guys. The building is not that far from that corner, right there. Okay, I'll see you in the morning at nine o'clock. That's all I have.
All right. Pat?
I just want to see this thing resolved. I don't know what the board is thinking or what they're going to do. I just want to see this thing resolved and get out of court. That's all I'm saying. I'm done.
All right. We moved it to the board, and we had it approved. All right.
You have to vote on that.
A motion on the floor. You need to vote on the motion.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll move it to the board. There's no other discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You didn't take a vote, Mary.
Oh, I beg your...
Somebody might want to stay here.
Oh, aye.
We do have executive session.
All in favor of adjourning? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. We're adjourned.
I'm calling the village board meeting back to order. We've already completed everything, therefore, a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Illinois compiled statutes 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C 2. So, motion would be in order. Trustee Schmidt?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Illinois compiled statute 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C 2.
Second.
Oh, never mind. It's mine. It's my...
Need a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Mertato?
Yes.
Trustee Pogec?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
We are adjourning to executive session. Thank you, everybody, for being here.